Oh my gosh. Sorry. We'll open this special city council meeting of April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four on Eclipse Day. The time is four P M. And we will ask. Megan, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I would love to. Please face the flag, right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You were trying to hide from me, I saw it. All right, Madam City Clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Duncan. Councilmember Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Thorpe.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Venable.
Here.
Mayor Bieber.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to the update discussion portion of tonight's special meeting, and this is going to be the Community Services Department Operations.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, just to kick us off here, so this is the first of a number of updates and discussions, I hope, by a number of our departments. It's very common that I get questions from members of the city council about specifics of department operations, and it occurred to me that, you know, there's an awful lot that our departments are doing, there's a lot that goes into the decisions that are made and the programs that are being presented, and it might be a good idea to have a discussion, presentation discussion with the council on kind of the inner workings of some of our departments. So we're going to start off tonight with community services, I believe the next one will be planning, and we'll go from there. So I'll turn it over to Megan to kick us off with community services.
Thank you, Chris, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. While tonight isn't the most full council meeting, I can guarantee you it'll be the most fun. I thought we were just gonna have a workshop and talk shop, and so we brought some cornhole and Connect Four. I don't know, do we want to start off with a game? Maybe one council member versus one staff member of Connect Four? Or do you want to just get down to business?
Let's get down to business.
All right, all right. You heard it here first, we are getting down to business. My name is Megan Wolf, I'm the Director of Community Services, and this is the organizational chart for the Community Services Department. And I can see it in your eyes, I know what you're thinking. What do all these people do? Well, they do a lot. Latisha Christian is our administrative assistant, she reports to me and helps with the day-to-day items of the Community Services Department. Mary Johnson works on the entertainment side of the department. You see, a couple of years ago, we split the department into two, an entertainment side, all the fun, and a recreational side, even more fun. And so Mary has four coordinators that report to her. And then Sarah Martinez is the Community Services Recreational Superintendent. I didn't know what was happening over there. And she is part, in charge of two supervisors, Nick Johnson and Vanessa Armilio. In addition to those staff, I also oversee Karen Reese, who is the coordinator over Five Winds Eldorado Ranch Park. And so we're gonna get, we're gonna dig deeper into this department. What's our mission? Well, we like to provide hospitable places and spaces, lively events, enriched programs in a fiscally responsible manner. You see, early last year, council adopted goals, and so after that, we came together as a department and said, we need to revitalize our mission statement, we need to know where we're going, how we're getting there, and what our purpose is. And so we made sure to add that fiscally responsible part, because a part of council's goals in two thousand and twenty-three, as well as in two thousand and twenty-four, is number five, to increase revenue generation, to offset costs of community services and development services functions, to move towards full cost recovery for festivals and user fees. And the one thing I can say this department is really good at is pivoting. And so we have been given a directive by council and the city manager to make sure that this is at the number one in our minds, and as we program things, to make sure that we are thinking about cost recovery. And so we, while we won't be a hundred percent cost recovery in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six, you will see us moving in that direction. And you could see today, if you look at fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, you could see that those cost recovery percentages increased from the previous fiscal year due to that council directive. Well, there were some people up in the dais that were chanting, not verbally, but with a fist bump, I think that was. And so without further ado, I'd like to introduce you to Sarah Martinez, the Community Services Recreation Superintendent. Sarah is over many divisions of this department. Those divisions include senior services, aquatics, community center, sports, crossing guard, really tough job, by the way. People really are crazy in the mornings when dropping their kids off at school, and the afternoon when picking them up. Like today, I went by the community center, Parkview, it's crazy. Anyways, youth advisory committee, camps, and Stars After School Program. Take it away, Sarah.
Thank you, Megan, good evening, City Council, it is our esteemed pleasure to join you this evening and give you a thorough look into our divisions. And so we're gonna start it off with senior services. So one day, we all hope to get to the point where we can retire, enjoy our lives, but what are you doing and where are you going? Hopefully, you're going to U K I P A's Senior Center located on First Street, because we have things going nonstop Monday through Friday. I'd like to first give an overview of Golden Wheels. So have you seen this van around town? And if you take a ride in it, we will sing with you, the wheels on the bus go round and round, round and round. It's really provided a resource for seniors. So essentially, it provides transportation for seniors sixty-two years and older, as well as disabled adults eighteen years of age and older. So we want to make sure that that eighteen years of age and older is out there for our community to know that we are here to serve our disabled residents as well. The program operates Monday through Friday, similar to the hours of the Senior Center, but we do operate a little earlier and a little later, so we can get people to and from. City staff did recently submit a continued project application to Omni-Trans for July two thousand and twenty-four through June two thousand and twenty-six, and we should hear back from Omni-Trans by next month, because the funding is up for renewal, and this particular program, Golden Wheels, is eighty percent covered through that grant funding. And I'd like to give a few highlights, just to kind of give you a tidbit of how this is really impacting our seniors. Since we started operating last year, we have five regular seniors who were not eating regularly. And so five seniors are making it to nutrition services Monday through Friday every single week, and they're getting their meals in. In addition to, they're doing activities at the Senior Center, so it's really a bigger effort, and we have more than one hundred U K I P A residents that have signed up for the Golden Wheels membership for this year alone. So we are definitely making that impact. And our daily ridership in March was about eleven people per day. And so with that, we'll jump over to our senior services and what that includes, such as classes, contract classes. If you're looking for fitness, do you like to dance? Are you looking for art classes? We have it all at the Senior Center. We also offer social opportunities, skill building, and providing this opportunity for them to go somewhere where they can access our internet and get all kinds of crafting and ukulele classes. Do you know how to play? They'll teach you. It's every Wednesday, Wednesday is actually the busiest day at the Senior Center, I guarantee you, between about eight-thirty, nine o'clock until one or two, you will not find parking. So Wednesdays are our day for the center. We have knit and crochet, paint and sip, it's non-alcoholic beverages, but it is a paint and sip that we are doing monthly, and those seniors are loving it, and we really appreciate it. So jumping toward, in conjunction with our partnerships, so we have a partnership with F S A, Family Services Association, and that is providing nutrition services. They are doing it homebound and in-person meals, Monday through Friday, and they are contributing to our funding for the Senior Center to offset some of those utility costs. And with that, did you know you can rent the Senior Center? Do you have a graduation party coming up? Or maybe, you know, somebody with a birthday, an anniversary? You don't want to dirty up your house? The Senior Center is up for rent. So we can rent it anytime we don't have programming offered on evenings and weekends, and we do have a current long-term lease agreement with Christ Redeemer Church, which is bringing in some revenue for the Senior Center, we're really proud of that collaboration. And we hope you host your next community function or family function at our Senior Center. So resources, why do seniors come to us? Well, they're looking for something, they're looking for legal aid, they're looking for help paying utilities, they are looking for bus pass distribution, they are looking for cellphone workshops. So we turn our community partners, and these are three of the bigger ones that have come out and provided workshops every month. Bus pass distribution is every Wednesday, I'm sorry, the third Wednesday of every month, but Connect and county opportunities are every Wednesday as well. And so we offer informational seminars, the most common three things that seniors are looking for now that we have an established transportation is senior housing, medical, and utility assistance. So we are definitely a resource hub for them. And I want to give a senior highlight. So there is a senior, and her name is Christine. Christine doesn't drive, and Christine doesn't have very many friends here in U K I P A, and she is at our Senior Center nearly daily, from open till close. She is reading, she is taking fitness classes, she is eating at the Senior Center, and according to her family, she would be completely lost without our Senior Center. We have helped, we as a city, have helped provide her a purpose to get up and leave her home every single day and go meet people and enjoy her life, and it's really very heartwarming, and she is one of the sweetest seniors that you will ever meet, and she wants to continue to volunteer with us, so we're excited. So with that being said, our current cost recovery model for fiscal year twenty-five is twenty-two percent for senior services. It is highly contributed by the general fund, so it's supported. Now, we have a pool, did you know we had a pool? Can you swim? Can you float? We'll teach you how to do both. Do you want to rock climb? Okay. So really, aquatics is at the Senior Center, I'm sorry, Seventh Street, I'm at a Senior Center, at Seventh Street, and we have the collaboration with Crafton Hills College, but I want to start with the Seventh Street Pool. So according to the National Stop Drowning Now Campaign, which U K I P A is a member of the Inland Empire Water Safety Coalition, drowning is the number one cause of accidental death for children ages one to four years old. And it is estimated that thirty-five hundred people will die as a result of drowning this year. So how do we as a city decrease those numbers and statistics? That is through our swim lessons. And we offer swim lessons for ages six months and older. I'm talking teens, adults, special needs, we have it all. We have group classes, we have semi-private, and we have private lessons, and we are operating as early as May this year, and we're going straight into our summer season. And we really, really want to continue to advocate that everybody has water safety. So every course, and every time the pool is open, even for rec swim or just aqua aerobics, we're gonna include water safety campaigns. So in addition to our swim lessons, which you can tell by these wonderful children are really enjoying and our staff, we offer drop-in programming, which includes aqua aerobics. That is not just for ladies, that is for everybody. We do have gentlemen that join this class, the music is fun, it's a wide variety of routines. We also offer lap swimming and what we call recreation swim. So recreation swim is you pay that low fee, you get to use our pool for those selected times and enjoy the water and amenities, which include the rock wall, and sometimes we do bring out our smaller slide for those under the age of ten. And we're more than just that. Oh, don't look at that just yet, sorry about that. We have classes and activities. What are we doing in community services in addition to offering programs? We are succession planning. So we are bringing back Splash Camp this summer. Splash Camp hasn't operated since two thousand and nineteen, and it is being revamped to be a leadership type of program in conjunction with our junior lifeguard program, and it is for those ages ten to fourteen, eleven to fourteen, so you've aged out of our swim lessons, but maybe you need some more assistance, or you're not old enough to work with us yet at fifteen, and where are you going? You're gonna come to our programs, and we're gonna start teaching you how to be a future lifeguard. And with that, we also offer lifeguard classes, so you can be certified with us and come work with us, or you can just be certified and take your skills elsewhere. I don't know if you gentlemen know, but senior lifeguarding is a thing. So if you know some senior adults who are like, hey, once upon a time, I was a lifeguard, we will recertify you, and there is a need for senior lifeguards, and they're popping up all over the country. And so we also have water safety instructor classes where we teach to become a swim instructor. And we also have a collaboration with our U K I P A swim team, and we are offering recreation swim team, and that's a contract class as well, so that is revenue generated. We also rent out our pool. Did you know you can rent our pool for a party? It includes lifeguards, you get the facility, you get the rock wall, everything's included, you just bring your own food, and you can rent it out, and you can rent it out anytime in the summer or starting next month, as long as we're not offering programming. So we're really excited by that, and we want you to beat the heat at Seventh Street. And so with that, I also want to come back to the partnership that we have with Crafton Hills College, and we manage the contract that utilizes that beautiful Olympic-sized swimming pool up there. And so after the college's first priority use, the city is next in line, and so we advocate for use for our U K I P A swim team and our Sand Canyon Water Polo Club, and then currently, we are receiving about twenty thousand dollars in revenue, provided that we're sending it right back to Crafton Hills College to offset those fees. And so as I had already pushed the lovely button, currently, our model is thirty-six percent cost recovery for fiscal year twenty-five. So you have played in our pool, you have done a paint and sip at our Senior Center, where are you going next? You're going to the Community Center, which we have youth, teen, and adult programming. And again, did you know you could rent out our Community Center? You can rent out actually any room in that facility, as well as our park shelters, anytime that they're not in use for city programming. And we have adapted and changed our sports popularity models. So have you heard about pickleball? Yeah, kind of, sort of, right? You know, are you a basketball fan? Maybe you're still playing racquetball. So these are the types of sports that are still being offered up at the Community Center as a drop-in programming, but we have seen a decrease in racquetball use. So what are we doing with that space? Uh, you can come work on your skills, you can be a basketball player and work on your dribbling, you can use it to volleyball practice inside of it, and people are doing that. We have some people who are practicing their pickleball skills outside of the normal drop-in times. So we are utilizing those two spaces in addition to for normal racquetball use. And so with that, we also have additional programming, such as contract classes for everything, fitness, skill building, enjoyment, socialization, we have an essential oils class. So we really do have things for all ages up there. And we have drop-in programming, summer youth basketball. Council, Mayor Pro Tem Venable, are you still coaching? Do you want to come coach for us this summer? We can do that, we can include them, we're including everybody. So we, we do have a collaboration with U K I P A Youth Basketball, Y Y B, but in the off-seasons, we are offering a summer youth basketball program at the Community Center. And since two thousand and twenty, we have seen a shift in childcare needs. We have seen a shift, and even in the last year, of what are parents doing and working? And how do you go out for a date night now? And how do you trust people to watch your children at home? Or do you even want to clean your house if somebody has to come over? We have you covered. Parents Night Out, it is a monthly program that we have started last year, and it operates the second Saturday of each month. So you want to catch a Y pack show? Drop off your kiddos for Parents Night Out. I mean, we'll keep them entertained, we'll keep them, we'll keep them safe, but it is a program that we're offering in addition to parking lot sales. Did you all secure your spots? Similar to Councilmember Thorpe. Do you want to see what he's hiding in his, like, closets and his garage and what he's gonna get rid of? So starting last year, we did operate two parking lot sales, one in the fall and one in the spring, and we're doing something very similar again this year. We saw a huge need for it, and it's a way to increase our revenue. We have the space already. So what are we doing? We are renting out parking lot stalls. Come sell your stuff. There are a few contingencies, don't sell certain items, but really, you can use that space. And I'm really excited to see what Councilmember Thorpe brings out on the twenty-seventh of this month. Spaces are almost sold out, but we do have a plan B to open up some additional spots if needed. In addition to, have you met our front desk team here at City Hall? Aren't they phenomenal? Aren't they like the sweetest people who are customer service oriented? Did you know that we have those same type of people up at the Community Center? No? Yes? Kind of, sort of? You got to come visit them. So our building attendants at the Community Center are very similar to those that are here, and they are the hub and providing the information and resources on behalf of our department. We're extremely proud of this team. We are talking, we are training a whole new workforce. This is the perfect job if you're attending college or in high school, and you're answering phones, we're teaching you skills, they are going off to do bigger and better things after they've worked for us, but they are the hub of our communication team six days a week. And so we're highly and greatly appreciative for them and very proud of them. And so with that, our current cost recovery model for the Community Center for fiscal year twenty-five is forty-six percent. Sports, are you sports fans? Okay, we're gonna test out my arm and see if we can do. Can you catch? You sure? Okay, you get a bag. Ready? You get a bag.
Sarah, I'm impressed.
I'm trying. You get a bag. All right, Councilmember Thorpe, you get a bag. All right. You're scared, are you sure? Okay, ready? You get a bag. So we have some swag bags, stuff in there for you. There's a water bottle to keep you hydrated, because you got to beat the heat out here in U K I P A, but you also have some very fun swag in there, you have a basketball jersey so you can help represent our programs. City staff, did you think I forgot about you? You get a water bottle, you get a water bottle. I'm like the Oprah of water bottles right now. You get a water bottle. I have one more, you get a water bottle. So part of community services is we are providing the services, but we get to have fun. And so this is some of the swag that our participants can get during the year, and so we're extremely proud of that. And so before I turn it back over to Megan for just a bit, I want to point out that we do have some contracts. And one of them is with Major League Softball, and so they do offer adult softball on the weekends, and I really want to point out our Pee-wee sports. So let's just say you've got a little one, and they're not quite ready to go into the leagues yet, or they have no skills, and maybe you do or do not have the patience to herd cats and teach them. We have you covered. So we have Pee-wee T-ball, Pee-wee basketball, and Pee-wee soccer. So if you happen to be up at the Community Center in the next few weeks, stop by on a Tuesday or Thursday evening. I kid you not, it will warm your heart and give you all kinds of warm fuzzies. Those are nearly eighty to a hundred little ones running around, touching the soccer balls with their hands, but they're learning, they're learning, and we are helping, creating these memories, maybe creating the next basketball star, soccer stars, Mike Trout's. Angel fans in the house? I know I have one. Okay. And so we're extremely proud of our sports programs as well. And with that, I'm gonna go ahead and toss it over to Megan.
I wear any of those shirts, you know I'm gonna get arrested for wearing mid-shirts, because they're mediums.
Healthy U K I P A would like you to strive to fit into that shirt by the end of the year.
Okay.
Sure, that's healthy. The opposite of healthy, in fact. I think the, the most used item is gonna be these stress balls up here.
Right.
So thank you for those.
You're welcome.
Speaking of stress, we have user groups that are amazing, they offer great programs and services to the community. Those user groups are baseball, softball, basketball, football, soccer, and pickleball organizations. You may recall that once a year, staff comes before council to approve facility use agreements, they're actually called, yeah, facility use agreements with each of the, these teams, in order to use city fields. Late two thousand and twenty-three, city staff met with the Little League, both national and American, to discuss revamping the cost to use the fields. Currently, each organization pays per player per season. The city is wanting to move to a pay-for-play model, or is recommending we move to a pay-for-play model, which would mean that you pay per hour per field. And this is a way that we can increase the revenue in the Community Services Department to offset the cost. The leagues would still be able to utilize the fields and facilities that the city owns, just they would pay for what they use. Currently, what we see is baseball will, and softball, they'll submit an application to use the fields, and they have priority use, and so they say, we would like the fields Monday through Saturday from two P M. to, up at Thirteenth, we don't have lights, so till sunset. Over at Bryant Glen, we do have lights, and some other facilities, we have lights as well, and so they go as late as ten P M. And so what's happening is because they're using the fields, basically monopolizing the fields, we're not able to accommodate other organizations that are requesting use. Some of those organizations are travel ball teams, and what we've seen in the last five years is really an increase in travel ball teams in U K I P A, wanting use of fields, particularly in baseball. I don't know, they say baseball is a very competitive sport here in U K I P A, and so we are seeing that, we're seeing a decrease in the number of older children, like eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, that are playing Little League, and we're seeing, like I said, an increase in those children wanting to play on travel ball teams. But we don't have enough fields that we can allocate them regular time, and so if we change the model to a pay-for-play, meaning the organizations that, the facility, that signs facility use agreements with the city, they will continue to be able to use our fields, they'll continue to be able to get priority use, but they have to pay for the time in which they want to use that field. In addition, we'd like to bring in travel ball organizations or travel, or teams that, I'm sorry, companies that host tournaments. Something where we can bring people to this community, play some baseball, softball, maybe fill up their gas tank, eat lunch or dinner, bring some tax revenue into this city, and then they can go back home, maybe they see a house they like that's for sale, and they move here. And so we also want to utilize our fields so that we can rent them out and host tournaments. So again, we had that conversation in late two thousand and twenty-three with the youth Little Leagues, both national and American, and while they weren't really excited about it, they did let us know, hey, if you want to put on tournaments, we can do that for you, and we'd like to be able to put on tournaments. To date, we haven't heard back from them in regards to how we're going to put these tournaments on, but we do plan on meeting with them after today's meeting to discuss that plan with them, but also to discuss the plan of moving forward on changing the process for renting fields and using city fields. We met with the Finance Committee earlier this month, or actually in March, to discuss this idea, and so it will, that, at that committee meeting, the Finance Committee thought that it was a good idea, and so again, we will move forward with meeting with those user groups. Sports overall right now in the department are at a fifty-two percent cost recovery, and our goal is to increase that by at least ten percent. I'm gonna pass it back to Sarah.
Thank you, Megan. Have you seen our crossing guards? They are phenomenal, they are in a phenomenal group, we greatly appreciate all of that we have on staff, they are out there. Rain, shine, snow, hail, wind, they are out there regardless, every day, schools in session, and they currently service eight schools, and this is through a partnership with the U K I P A Calamisa Joint Unified School District, and their, our agreement with them does expire in June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four, so we are up to renew or agreement with them does expire in June 30th of 2024. So we are up to renew or move forward in a different direction. And I'd like to note that the current cost recovery is 22% for the Crossing Guard program. So if you'd like to see some potential changes in recommendations of moving forward in providing such a service, then we look forward to hearing from you. Currently, there's no revenue associated with this program, other than the partnership reimbursement that we get for a portion from the school district. And so moving forward, Youth Advisory Committee, it is sincerely my pleasure. I'm with Councilwoman Mayor Protem in raising my fists in appreciation for this committee. I greatly appreciate serving as their staff liaison. They represent you and the teen voice in our community. They learn about the functions of the city. They gain leadership skills, and their meetings are typically held on the first and third Wednesdays. I do know that they really do want to meet with all of you and quote-unquote interview you, because they would love to know, why did you choose to become a city council member? What did it take for you to get there? What's your life experience? What can they learn from each of you? And so I do invite you to come to an upcoming meeting and come meet with our team. I won't point out that they are smarter than Mayor Protem's family. Is that correct? They are. Okay. I was a smarty-pants in high school, but I can't say I had a 4.6 GPA. Okay. So with that, I'm gonna move to our seasonal camps. So when school's out, where do you go? Well, in Ucaipa, you're gonna come to our camps. We offer spring, summer, winter, and fall. And so every time the school district's out for an extended period of time, we offer a seasonal camp. And most of those are based up at the community center, and you can gain leadership through our junior camper program, which operates in the summer. Again, we are looking at succession planning. You've aged out of our camp, but you're not quite ready to work with us yet. Where do you go? We will teach you life skills, job skills, and keep you safe and entertained. And so activities are also created for the campers to be enriching, engagement, and full of social interaction. The current cost recovery model for this program is 62% for fiscal year 25. So with that, what's the largest program that the city operates? Da-da-da-da, Stars After School Program. So this program has been around since 2014 is when it was inceptioned. It did kind of morph from the original Kids Club program, which was here for well over 20 years. It's a partnership with the school district. We currently operate at seven school sites. What's really unique about this program is the partnership that we truly have created with the school district. They are assisting with trainings. They are giving recommendations. We have support on their campus. And with that, I don't know if you all heard, but a couple of years ago, the state of California said that, effective now, each student has to be offered a nine-hour school day. Doesn't mean you have to attend nine hours, but you have to be offered a nine-hour school day, and your school district has to provide that. So how did school districts all over the state of California start to accomplish this? Last year, they turned to their after-school programs, and there are collaborations with whoever was offering them. So Ucaipa Cala Mesa Joint Unified is getting a very significant amount of money, which we call ELOP, Expanded Learning Opportunity Program Funding. And that has now moved our program into being more than 100% cost recovery, and it is taking care of all of our Stars After Program needs. That is how we've been able to hire two new full-time staff to our community services team, because it is fully funded by the school district. And so with that being said, we are extremely, extremely grateful to have this partnership. It does house, though, the largest after, or I'm sorry, part-time crew that the city has, comes from our after-school program. We are taking care of nearly 700 students every week between the seven schools. So we have grown significantly in the last few years. What I would like to note is when the budgets do come your way, that you will see a substantial increase in some of our expenditures, which again are being covered by the district. And that has become, because in 2020, COVID hits, we were actually, the city of Ucaipa, the only local place that even I could find, if not in California, that offered some type of childcare programming during the pandemic. We offered extended learning up at the community center. And I'm, it was difficult. Those kiddos learned how to turn off their internet, and turn off their computers, and say that they didn't know how to log in. And so our team really worked to provide this resource. And with that, we saw a change in student behavior. We have seen that we need lower ratios. We need more staff onsite. We need different training models that we have ever seen with dealing with behavior before. And so with that being said, we have increased our expenditures, which are matched by the school district, to then meet these needs that we're seeing from the district. And so with that, it's 100% cost recovery, if not more.
Goal number five, accomplished. So I just wanted to say that I started today's presentation off with a joke about, how do you have that many staff? Hopefully, you're kind of seeing why we have so many staff due to the large amount of programs and services offered. And that's all the time I have to speak today. Thank you. I'd like to turn it over to our entertainment side of the department, recreation, I mean, community services supervisor, Mary Johnson.
Is this thing on? Just kidding. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to present to you the divisions that we oversee. I'm here to fill you in on some of the projects that me and my team oversee within the department, and they include marketing, special events, and the Y-PAC. First is our marketing division. Within the marketing division, we oversee social media platforms, including Instagram, Facebook, X, Twitter, Twitter X.
X.
Nextdoor, Snapchat, and maybe even in the future, TikTok. I know what you're thinking. TikTok? However, it could be a really valuable paid advertising campaign to grab some viewership, you know, to learn about the program, services, classes, events that we offer within the community. We also oversee two websites, and almost a third on the way. They are the ucaipa.gov website, which we are in transition of passing that over to IT. However, the community services department does do a lot of ongoing edits and updates to that. The ucaipaperformingarts.org website as well, soon to be .gov, and the Five Winds Festival website that we'll be launching in just a few weeks. Digital advertising includes paid advertising on all of our social media platforms, our websites, as well as our City of Ucaipa app, any email campaigns that we put out, our marquees that you see around the city. We don't talk about the one that's here. And then our new digital billboards that were just recently installed along the I-10, thanks to the Planning Department for that. So we have two there that we work with, and we will post all of the Y-PAC events that we have. The ticketed events are our priority, and then our festivals as well. Print materials include the Your Ucaipa Community Services Guide that comes out quarterly, as you've seen, as well as any static billboards, flyers, postcards, banners, street banners, press releases, window clings, and any mailers that we might utilize to advertise our programs. And finally, any radio ads. We also oversee if we need to get our events on K-Frog, or K-Cal, or Koala, we'll utilize our, this department to get those set up. Next is our Special Events Division, or as we like to call our Party Division. We have our community events, which include Extravaganza, our teen and adult egg hunts, movies in the park, Fourth of July, concerts in the park, the 9/11 memorial ceremony. And throughout history, our Special Events Department and Division has hosted these events as free events. And with the adoption of council's goals, the Special Events Division has pivoted and began to look at different revenue streams within these community events here. And what we've been doing is adding vendor spaces, so charging a fee to vendors to bring in some revenue or even profit share. Charging for parking at some events, or even charging a registration fee, where they would have to sign up and pay a registration fee to come to the event. And this brings us to festivals. Megan, Anna, hit it. All right, our festivals include the Ucaipa Music and Arts Festival, Autumn Fest, the Five Winds Country Music Festival, and Winter Fest. And the Ucaipa Music and Arts Festival, we hope to see you there in 25 days. It's right around the corner. And when building the cost recovery model for this event, we knew we were gonna have to make some very difficult decisions. And one of those difficult decisions was entertainment. We kept telling ourselves over and over that we need to exceed our revenue than over our costs. And one of those ways to get to cost recovery was to limit the budget in entertainment and production. And so Megan and I have been building close relationships with agents of artists, and the trends in the industry are just that artist fees have absolutely skyrocketed, which I will get to a little bit more in depth later on. So this year's entertainment might not match that of previous years, but it'll still be an amazing show with Mark Farner's American Band featuring The Long Run, Experience the Eagles. And so for special events, in fiscal year 2023, we're projected, we, we're 43% cost recovery, and so fiscal year 24, we're projected at 65% cost recovery. So we're working to really increase those cost recovery percentages. And one other way and how we're gonna do that is sponsorships. And so we are looking at obtaining sponsors, and we have already gained a lot of sponsors for our community events and festivals. Our coordinator, Elise Campbell, is hard at work to secure sponsorships, not only for special events, but also for the Performing Arts Center. And so council, if you know anyone or any companies that might have the means to sponsor an event, that has an already sponsored event, please let them know or send them our way. We'd be happy to chat with them and see how they can support our events in the future. Now we're gonna move over to the beautiful Ucaipa Performing Arts Center, as you all know, opened in 2019. A few years before that, the city worked diligently to contract out the facility to an outside user group, and that user group was M&amp;M Entertainment. The city ended the contract with M&amp;M prior to opening, and hired staff internally to, to run the Performing Arts Center for its opening date in April of 2019. City Council's goals included offering the community indoor and outdoor shows that included local bands, cover acts, comedy, and national acts, both on the indoor and outdoor stage. Then, the worst thing that could have possibly happened to the art community, as well as performing arts centers in our area, was COVID-19. And the Performing Arts Center was closed from one year, from March 2020 to about April 2021, and laid off the Performing Arts Center manager, and reallocated the coordinator to other divisions. And that's when I came in. Megan kindly asked me to transfer over to the Performing Arts Center, where in May of 2021, we hosted the Music and Arts Festival that marked the reopening of the Performing Arts Center. And at the time, city council directed staff to be a rentals facility with limited programming. So this brings us to where we are today. Currently, the Performing Arts Center offers contract classes, including art and acting, and we also have partnerships with two organizations that offer musical, theatrical musicals and ballet shows. Our rentals include both private and performance rentals. So your private rentals are your weddings, your birthdays, baby showers, that kind of thing. And performance rentals are ticketed events, such as our recently sold-out Journey USA show that was a few weeks ago, as well as Johnny Cash yesterday. And so basically, when we opened in 2019 to now in 2024, we really tried to figure out what works at the Y-PAC. And we found that national acts are gonna be our highest cost recovery, when we sell 3,000 standing room capacity with higher ticket prices in the range of $45 to $75 at the Y-PAC. And as well, with in, consistent indoor shows with a capacity of anywhere from 300 to 550 for like theme nights and comedy shows at the Y-PAC. And so at tonight's council meeting, it actually is an item on the agenda in which we will ask for additional budget to host a national act on the outdoor stage this fiscal year to help us try to make that cost recovery model. We're projecting cost recovery at 40% for 2024, and 65% for 2025 at the Performing Arts Center, which is the best the Y-PAC has done so far. Lastly, since our first YMAF in 2012, I just wanted to touch on talent really quick. We've seen private sector businesses such as AccraSure Arena and Yamival open venues created for live entertainment that are really driving up the cost of artist fee in our area. And so we are really trying to do our best to obtain those best artist fees that we possibly can, take that artist fee from the agent, build it into a cost recovery model, decide what our ticket prices are gonna be, and then present it and try to move forward with getting these national acts to really help us try to get to that cost recovery model. And so we're hard at work to really improve our cost recovery at the Y-PAC.
But wait, there's more. Was there something we missed that you wanted to add in there? Or are you feeling like you wanted a light show back? No? Okay. There's me. So a few years ago, we, I'm gonna skip that slide. I thought it was really funny when I made it, and now I'm quite embarrassed. That was after work one day when my kids were swimming, and I couldn't help but jump in, in my work clothes, and join them. So with that being said, a few years ago, we requested a reorganization of the department. At that time, although the reorganization didn't move, fully move through, we did want to continue to take on additional programming, because why not? Let's just keep doing more. So we have special event permits that I oversee in my department. Some of those events used to be like the Redlands Bike Classic, that'd be a special event permit. The Christmas Parade, hosted by Rotary, that's a special event permit. So anytime you want to have an event outside of, well, anytime you want to have an event in the city, you have to get a special event permit. And that's through myself, and Latisha helps me with those. I also oversee the Healthy Ucaipa Committee, the Parks and Recreation Commission. Eldorado, we opened archery a few months ago, and we have had classes with a contract instructor. And it's been very successful. And in late May, we're gonna open camping up at Eldorado. We have eight campsites, dry camping, no amenities. I'd like to highlight, there are no amenities. There's no power. There's no water. It's dry camping. But you bring your horse, and there's a beautiful trail and a view that is worth a million dollars. Finally, we over, we also oversee the Keep Ucaipa Clean program. So let's talk back to community services. Questions, comments, concerns?
That was probably, nope, no doubt, that was the best, most lively presentation we have ever had.
Do you want to play connect four?
Maybe, maybe. Mr. City Manager, are you going to include light shows in your presentations from now on?
Laser light show.
Laser light. Okay. Now we're gonna go back to community services and say they need to step it up next time.
So as you can see, this city does a lot with community services. I've actually never seen a city that provides this level of community services per capita. And it is an enormous chunk of our budget. It's something that people have come to expect from this city. It's one of the things that makes Ucaipa Ucaipa. That being said, it's very expensive. And as you know, we're in a very serious deficit situation. And so, as was adopted in the goals last year and this year by the city council, to seek cost recovery wherever we can, I have tasked community services with doing that as well. Now, not every service provided by Cubanese Services will be able to achieve that, nor should it. You know, we don't charge families for going and using a park, right? But the bottom line is, unless we do a much better job of attaining cost recovery for things like the festivals that we put on, right, for organized groups using our sports fields, we're just not gonna be able to we're just not going to be able to continue providing those services, right? And, and these are services that the community has come to want and expect from us. So I think, I mean, just really in the last year, community services made great strides in moving in that direction. You saw almost across the board, cost recovery has, has jumped from just a year ago. We will continue moving in that direction. Some, some functions have more potential there than others. Like, let's take the Five Winds Country Music Festival. We see that as, as one event that has tremendous revenue potential. You know, had we sold out last year, which was only our second year ever doing the event, that would have generated, would have netted about a million dollars for the city, which could have helped offset some of the other, you know, programming costs that we've had. So when we look at restructuring how we're charging for, for our fields with these groups and just how we're operating across the board, keeping that in mind is going to be really important that if we, if we want to keep providing these services, we've got to do a better job at, at, at seeking cost, cost recovery. The Y-PAC has presented a particular challenge. Being frank, I think when that building was constructed, designed and construction, constructed, the focus really wasn't on cost recovery. It's a tremendous asset in the community, I think that was the focus. But the in, indoor seating capacity is under three hundred. You just can't bring big enough acts for theater that small to get, get the big name acts and charge, you know, the, the higher ticket prices to get cost recovery. So the city has had to pivot. And to get those bigger names, we have to use the outdoor stage. But in order to charge for tickets, we've got to fence it off, which people hadn't originally contemplated, right? So we're, we're now at a model where some of the concerts and services that are provided are free of charge, but some are not, you know? Music and Arts Festival, we've never charged for, for the band, for Music and Arts Festival to watch that concert. But costs have gone up so much to bring in the big names that we're probably going to have to pivot. You know, either bring in lesser-known names or convert to, you know, not bringing in big names at all. And it's a, a community event where we're, we're highlighting talent in the, in the local community. Because otherwise, we're going to be paying out of pocket and, and probably to the tune of six figures to, to bring in that talent. And if our budget's healthy and we have surplus and we want to do that, then, then that, that's great. We can, we can do that. But in a time where we're trying to fix significant budget deficits, we have to be mindful of those things. So I think community service is doing a really good job of taking the direction of the council and, and the city manager and moving towards cost recovery. I think our festivals have, have that potential. We're doing things like taking over the sale of alcohol as the city, which will produce revenue, taking over the, the renting of vendor space, which will bring in revenue for the city, getting a handle on costs. So we're optimistic that we'll be able to continue providing these services. But I just want the council to be aware that, you know, it's a shift in, in operations and some, some people aren't, aren't going to appreciate that things are being done differently. Or maybe things were, were free before and they're not now. Or maybe we, we gave away revenue streams to nonprofits where we, we can't afford to give away those revenue streams now. We're, we're spending a tremendous amount of money putting on these events. We, we have to start, you know, mitigating those costs, those costs somehow. I've had the opportunity over the past year to dive in with Megan on how talent is booked. It's a whole world that, that, that I was not familiar with. It, it involves the building of, of, of relationships. It's incredibly complex. I've asked her a lot of the hard questions. We've, we've met with a number of experts in the industry, one in particular, who all claimed they could do it better. And after meeting with them, and we were just not at all convinced that they would do anything different than what we're, what we're already, already doing. But it's, it's an art and a science, and it's something that, that's constantly changing. And I've been really impressed with, with, with how you guys have jumped in and, and learned that world and are, are making the best out of a situation that really, you know, you know, we look at, at, at facilities in other cities like the Fox Performing Arts Center and Riverside, and they get acts like Jerry Seinfeld, right? Well, they have sixteen hundred seats in that facility, right? And so with what we've been given, we're having to really get creative. And, and, and the staff has, not just in the concerts and the talent that's booked, but in, in renting out the facility more and marketing the facility. I drove by the other night and there was a prom happening at the Y-PAC. And those sorts of activities bring in revenue. So we will continue marching in that direction. We, we do have a few more minutes. I'd like to really see if the council has any, any questions. Questions?
So the Five Winds music, we're not going to be in the same position there as we are now with the Y-PAC. Because when we planned that Y-PAC, Greg Bog and I were both on that planning committee. And that started out as a, a project not to rent out the facility, but to try to make revenue based on the fact that we were going to bring in, you know, high-end acts and charge decent money and, and go forth there. And once it, once it got to staff and I guess ran into all these obstacles of, of not being able to generate enough money, it changed. And, and I don't want to see that happen with the Five Winds. We just loaned out four, four million dollars. And I just, I just hope that we don't get ourselves into a pinch like we are right now with the Y-PAC. This, this community is going to react adversely to this. I mean, they've been used to having, and, and by the way, that was an excellent presentation. And I agree, the most lively presentation I've, I've seen here ever. And I commend you all for that. I, I think you guys have got a lot of talent and skills and I appreciate that. But this community is not going to react well to this and, and, and you're, you're going to get the blame for it. Chris Mann, the city, new city manager is going to get the blame, or this council is going to get the blame for it. But the bottom line is that this, the community is not going to react well to this, especially as the quality of the acts go down. I mean, we had Berlin the first year we had the Y-PAC, we had Berlin the second year. And then I don't remember all the rest of them for there.
Playing light tees one year, I know. No, and, and we'll continue to bring in good acts. In fact, on, on the city council meeting agenda tonight, there, there's a request to, to approve, you know, a concert where just a couple of weekends ago, an opportuna came up with a really big country name to come in at a really discounted price. So we want to jump on that and offer that, you know? And you'll see the bigger, the bigger acts. The difference is we're going to have to charge for the bigger acts, right? And we're going to, we're going to have to do them outside, right?
So but the, the consultant that we worked with on that Y-PAC, I, I was there every step of the way. The consultant never told us and that we needed sixteen hundred seats. Otherwise, we wouldn't have that space out there for parking. We would have had a bigger place. Maybe we would have had a bigger place. But, but I just see that that was a, a, a failure on the behalf of the consultant or the people that were giving us advice. Because I didn't know anything about that. I just thought it was going to be easy to make money there because it's such a great facility.
And we're about to go through a whole process with the community in community meetings to talk about the budget. Music and Arts Festival, I mean, I, I think the sell-out number was seven thousand or seventy-five hundred if we, if we had sold out.
For the Five Winds?
The Five Winds, I'm sorry. What did I say? Music and Arts Festival. Yeah, Five Winds. So when you're talking about those kind of numbers, I mean, break even or better than break even, not a problem.
No, no, I'm all in on that. I just want, I just want to make sure because I honestly.
But, but you're right, some, some members of the community are not going to be happy about, about, about the pivot and having to charge and not bringing the big acts for, for that Music and Arts Festival. But the alternative is to stop having the events. And I, I, I think that they would dislike that even more.
No, I'm not being critical. I'm just saying, I'm just trying to anticipate what's going to happen with, with the community. Because we have had this, this impression that we have a great community activity. I'm taking too much time anyway. That's all I got to say.
If I could just add, the indoor theater was designed based on community meetings that we had. And we had two theater partners in the community, if you recall, that were part of the planning committee and design of that facility. And one of the reasons why the indoor theater is the size that it is is because those groups didn't want to pay the licensing fee for the higher, for the plays. When you get above three hundred dollars, you have to pay, three hundred people, you have to pay more for that licensing of that performance. And so we came, we met with the committee and then we came back to council. And in order to meet the needs of our community partners at the time, that's why the indoor theater was limited to the size.
It, it's a cautionary.
And I voted no each time that came.
It, it's a cautionary tale. Some things should not be done by committee. Because neither of those theater groups are paying our costs today. They're not even exist, I don't think they're.
Oh, I understand. It was a mistake, it was a mistake for sure. Anyway, I'm sorry.
No worries, any other questions?
No.
No?
Got a couple of comments? All right, one question. I'll make it quick. This probably isn't the time or place to talk about finances, but when we're talking about crossing guards, their contract coming up, I think they're very important. Need to try to keep them around as long as possible. But if we're only getting twenty-two percent in cost recovery because of the schools are only pitching a little bit, we're affecting, we're helping the schools. They, I don't know if there's a way to get more out of them or not for that. But they do a great job. There's the young lady at H and Second all the time, greets everybody, waves to everybody, even if you're not picking up from the school. She's just super friendly, so kudos to her. The marketing aspect, have we ever looked at using, either it's geo-tagging or geo-fencing? I'm not sure the right phrase. But when you have events and things that you're marketing within your area, it pushes out information to the cell phone users in that area. And when they see that the cell phone is in that area, all of a sudden, the different events and things that are going on will start popping up on their feed.
We haven't dipped into that yet. We know that the Ceremonial County Sheriff uses it for emergencies. But the, what we do use or we can use is the City View Ucaipa app. So anyone that has an app, the app downloaded, we can send out a push notification, you know? But that doesn't answer necessarily the geo-tracking, but we can definitely look into it.
And if I may, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, that's fine. I was just going to say, I, I hear that has a good, good exposure. It just pops up on, like, if you were to go to Vons, then later on in your home, all of a sudden, Vons ads start popping up on your, on your phone, you know? So something related to our.
Targeted, targeted marketing is, is we just partnered or contracted with a company? Because we know that's the key to success in selling out Five Winds. And it's the key to success in selling tickets at the Y-PAC. We need to have targeted marketing advertisements hitting your phone all the time. If you're thinking about country, Five Winds better pop up on that phone. So we just contracted with a company that is just doing targeted advertisement for our festivals and events in the Y-PAC.
Again, I think that, I don't think that we're capturing all our costs, I mean, all our profits on there. Because the tax revenue that comes in with the city when we have all these events and stuff, we haven't done an audit yet, so before and after. So to capture extra, that extra money and stuff, that can all go to Ms. Megan, so she can spend some more money.
Don't, don't tell her that. No, no, you're, you're right. Every time we have one of these events, there, there is a boost in, in sales tax revenue. It's really impossible to, and we've talked with HDR, HDL, our sales tax consultant on this, it's really impossible to identify what those numbers are on a specific day or a specific weekend, right? Because sales tax isn't reported that way, right? We know that the impact's there, we know that it brings those benefits. But we're really unable to, and we've had multiple conversations with HDL on this. It's really impossible to identify exactly what those numbers are.
Well, yeah, you can go to the, each one of the different companies out there and stuff and you can tell them. And they will tell you that the festivals bring in, you know, hundreds of thousands, you know, more dollars coming in. So like I said, I don't think, before you give up the, you know, on these, whatever you call them, festivals and stuff, you know? I mean, we need to see how much it does impact the whole city.
And for the record, we're not giving up on the festival.
All right, no other questions?
Nope.
All right, we will adjourn the special city council meeting. We went a little over, it's five oh four.